...now, just a couple of reminders here. We have a large crowd here. Just want to say, you're being filmed right now, number one. Number two, cell phones, if you could, if you could turn them either on vibrate or off. And this is how it's going to go. The petition is going to come up and they're going to talk to us and they're going to tell us about their project. We're going to hold the audience, no questions, okay? No questions, all right? You'll have your opportunity, but you first have to go through the project and start that way, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hear the petition of Abington Investments LLC, Shawn Carpenter, 245 Central Street, Abington, for comprehensive permit under MGL Chapter 40B for relief from the following. 175-21A and J uses 175-29 dimensional and density regulations. 175-43A 1A, 175-432A, 175-50B and C, 175-52G parking and loading requirements. 175-31, 175-32 A through E multifamily use. 175-34 earth removal. 175-37 transit oriented development. 175-66 buffer strip. 175-67-1 dot 1 outdoor lighting, as well as what we received via overnight mail, fee waivers, inspectional system waivers, water sewer, health department fee waivers for 144 rental units known as Abington Senior Housing at 1015 Plymouth Street, properly located on assessors map 17 and 18 lots 23 and 6 in the R30 zone.
Okay, and 1015 Plymouth Street, correct?
Yes.
This location, assessors map 17 and 18 lot 23 and 6, must be approved by the Board of SOAR commissions at a regular scheduled meeting. Let's see, from the treasurer, no issues. That is it on this, so if you want to, go on up and...
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the record, my name is Dan Bailey. I am a land use lawyer with the Boston firm of Pierce Atwood. While I've never appeared in Abington, I did grow up not too far away in Waymouth and actually was generally not very successful when I played baseball against Abington High School. You had some good pitchers. It just, you know, a little bit about me, because I'm new here, though Attorney Questle does know me. You know, I do land use law, I do these types of projects, both for developers and for municipalities. You know, in the south of Boston, I'm currently working on projects in Quincy, Denham, Westwood, Plymouth, Norwood. Our presentation will be short. We understand that it's a public hearing and that the board members of the public are here to ask questions, so we try and keep it really tight. I know that people get very frustrated when they sit here for an hour, an hour and 15 minutes and have to listen to a lot of really technical detail on stormwater and things like that, so we're not going to go that deep into those things. We have people here who can answer all of those questions. We'll stay as long as we need to, to answer questions, but, you know, we want to just sort of give you a big picture and then leave it to the board and the public to kind of drive where we go from there. I'm going to give an overview of the project, briefly discuss the comprehensive permit process. Glenn LaPointe Jr., who is here along with members of his family, will then discuss senior housing needs in the town. Shawn Carpenter, who's here to my right, he's the project's development consultant, he's basically a comprehensive permit consultant, will discuss how the affordability requirements work and state processes that has unfolded to date. And then Shawn will introduce Sevi Streklovsky, I think I got that right, project architect, who will briefly discuss the project design. So, as has already been said, this project is called Abington Senior Housing. I'm going to move over to boards, just so I can point some things out. Is this live?
It's more for the TV than it is for you.
Okay. And I'm going to move down to this one because I was told that this is the best one for the TV. So, the site is located at 1015 Plymouth Street. Now, it's hard to see it, but I think you've all got materials. Here's Plymouth Street. It fronts on Plymouth Street, there's about 40 feet of frontage there. Then there's a driveway back to the two proposed buildings, which are adjacent to the town of Abington Senior Center, the MBTA line, the commuter rail is up here. You know, that's very simply the site, it's about a 17 acre site, a fair amount of it is wet. To go to the site plan, I know this is really hard from a distance, but we've got two buildings, Building A, again, here's your driveway coming in down here, so this orientation is different than that one. Here's Building A and Building B, there's parking all around the different buildings. There'd be 64 units in Building A and 80 units in Building B. 112 of the units will be one bedroom, the remainder will be two bedrooms. 25% of the units, in accordance with the requirements of the state, will be affordable, and that means that rents will be fixed by the state at what the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development determines is an affordable rent for someone that earns 80% of the median income in the area. Shawn will talk a little bit more about that later. The buildings will be 46 feet tall and there will be 229 parking spaces. Sevi will talk in more detail about the layout and the design. The one other thing that I want to talk briefly about is the comprehensive permit process. You know, I know you've got town council here, which is great, and I know town council knows how this works, but what we've applied for is known as a comprehensive permit. That process is governed by state regulations, it's not governed by local regulations, and in fact, it allows the applicant to override local regulations. We're required to submit a list of waivers, part of which you read earlier, we submitted a supplemental one overnight, I've got more copies of that if you want it. But the comprehensive permit process starts by submitting an application to the state, the Department of Housing and Community Development, for determination that the project is suitable financing by a state sponsored subsidizing agency. If the answer is yes, the HCD issues what's known as a project eligibility letter, which it has done for this project and is in the package that was submitted to you. The property owner then has the ability to apply to the zoning board of appeals for a comprehensive permit. What's a comprehensive permit mean? Well, exactly what it sounds, it means the only permit that we have to get, only local permit that this project needs to obtain, other than a building permit, is this permit, the comprehensive permit. All of the normal other processes, and you started talking earlier about some of the comments that you've received, you know, if there was a planning board site plan process, normally, that gets folded into this, the planning board is free to submit comments to you, but they aren't going to hold any of their own hearings. There are conservation commission hearings, because the conservation commission actually issues a state permit under the State Wetlands Protection Act. The key issue for the board to consider is whether the project is consistent with local needs, which is a term of art established by state regulations. You know, it's defined by state regulations as one of two things. It's either one of the stat, what they call the statutory minima are met. The classic, and what most people understand here is if 10% of your housing stock is affordable and listed on the state subsidized housing inventory, you have met the requirements, you know, for local need and you need not, you could reject any application for a comprehensive permit. If you have not met that, in Abington, I checked today, at least on what's published, that doesn't necessarily mean that's where you are, but what's published is Abington's at 7.6%, so it's under 10%. So, if the statutory minima are not met, the regulations require that the board presume that the project is consistent with the regional need for affordable housing. Under those circumstances, the board can only deny the application if it finds there are no conditions that will satisfy local concerns related to health, safety, the environment, or to preserve open space. This is a very hard, high bar for a community to overcome, but, you know, we're here to make our presentation, we want to work with the community, we hope that you will receive this in a positive way. It is an age restricted project, so is it over 62 or over 65, Shawn?
55.
So, over 55. So, it's limited to people that are over 55. Want to get into the details about what that means, you know, if somebody's married and is 55, his partner is 50, that's okay, you know, we can get into those details. But I don't want to talk any further. Glenn LaPointe is going to talk a little bit about what they're thinking about and the need that they're trying to satisfy with this project.
Hi, my name's Glenn LaPointe. I'm one of the members of Abington Investments, along with my brothers, my father. Just, I'm going to keep this really quick too, because I think we know that there's a need of senior housing in the town. I just kind of wanted to let you guys know where we're coming from and what our goals are to, I guess, in introducing this project. And I'm going to read some of this, just because I do a better job with that, so. "Our goal is to provide affordable senior housing to the town of Abington. This will come at no cost to the town or the taxpayers of Abington. Instead of costing the town money, the town will actually gain quarterly tax revenue from this project. There'll be no maintenance or ongoing costs to the town that often come along with public projects. This will be handled privately at the cost of the owner. This includes landscaping, plow and regular maintenance of the buildings and anything else that comes along with owning a project. This will provide a safe, comfortable environment for our senior citizens. Our goal is to give seniors a safe, community-type atmosphere. The close proximity of the senior center makes this a great spot for the project. Seniors will be able to walk to the senior center and take advantage of many of its great programs. The current wait time for seniors to get into Abington housing is reportedly years. There's no way to tell exactly when you'll be allowed to move into one of these units. This puts our seniors at a serious disadvantage. Seniors need the security of having a place to go in the future. Not knowing what the future brings creates unnecessary stress for us senior citizens. Many seniors lived in Abington all their lives. To be forced out of town at this stage of the game just doesn't seem right. These people are important and respected members of our community who have served on town boards as coaches and teachers to our children. They've paid taxes in the town of Abington throughout their lives, they feel comfortable with our local banks, grocery stores, businesses, and other great amenities that Abington has to offer. For our citizens to be forced to change locations because of lack of options is disheartening and, in our opinion, irresponsible. Over the years, our seniors have supported many of the great projects in this town, highlighted, of course, by the new state-of-the-art middle school and high school that just got built. We feel like it's time that we return the favor and take care of our seniors. The project provides our senior citizens with the options that they would otherwise not have. With property taxes only continuing to rise and maintenance costs that continue to trend upward, many seniors living on a fixed income cannot keep up with the skyrocketing cost of homeownership. They may no longer be able to afford the house they're living in, nor will they be able to perform many of the physical tasks that require, that are done in owning a home. As a parent, I tell my own kids that one of the keys to a successful life is to never run out of options. I tell them to always make sure that you leave yourself as many options as possible. Sadly, the seniors of Abingtons may feel like they're running out of options. This project will allow our senior citizens to have another, more affordable option. We consider this project to be forward-thinking and responsible building. Please help us bring Abington closer to reaching the town's obligation to provide affordable housing to its people." So, that's just, I guess, from our words, what we're thinking. I think most of you guys know our family is in town, our business is in town, our interests are in town, and I think just about every one of my brothers and sisters live in the town. We wouldn't be proposing this project if we didn't think it was a good thing for the town. Thanks for the consideration, appreciate it. I'm going to introduce this guy, Shawn, and I'll take a seat.
Do I have to move that, or is that exactly right? I don't know if it's for the folks at home, right?
Yes, it is, yeah.
I think the LaPoints hired me to do this because I'm the youngest of eight in my family as well, so they have a kinship towards large families, but my name is Shawn Carpenter. I'm from Shamrock Development, local consulting firm in Waymouth, Quincy, and very involved in the affordable housing business industry across 25 states over the last 21 years. This project is an interesting use of resources in an area that desperately needs senior housing, and it was the first, the first thing I noticed when I came down here to talk to these guys originally, when this application was being considered. Our process of going through Mass Housing for our project eligibility, which was received last December, through a very extensive process that included a site visit that some of you may have been at, members of the selectmen were there, and the town manager and his team. We have had numerous conversations that led up to a town meeting vote that allowed the town to enter into a discussions about easement and access through the senior center lot. We've had conversations with the council and agent, we've had conversations with a number of department heads as well, planning board members, to discuss the need for affordable senior housing in the area. The 144 units represents a team collaborative effort. I think we have a very strong team here that really considered the site and considered the location. Mass Housing took note of that in their, in their project eligibility letter, which is in your packet. You should have before you our submission to Mass Housing from last year, as well as our approvals and our submission for comprehensive permit here to the town. The 144 units will be developed under comprehensive permit, of which, as Dan said, 112 units are one bedrooms, 32 units are two bedrooms. The, that breaks down to at least 30, at least 35 units will have to be restricted to those who are making less than 80% of the AMI, and I'm just going to run through that very quickly before I finish up here. The area median income in the Brockton Metropolitan Statistical Area is $84,100. For somebody who's at 80%, for a family of four, which probably would like, not likely live in this facility, would be $67,300. A likely resident in this facility would be a single household, making less than $47,150. As a result, their rents would be limited to $1,163 for a one bedroom and $1,558 for a two bedroom. Those are maximums, and that's based on the 2018 income limits. The balance of the, of the units may, or may not be restricted based on the financing program that's utilized after this process takes place. Also, before you, you should have a copy of a feasibility study that was required by Mass Housing. I will say, I've done a number of these project eligibility processes, and this was one of the few, because of its size and location, that Mass Housing ordered us to get a market study or preliminary market study done, which we provided, and we did. And I just want to take note of one thing that Bonds and Company said. "The housing stock in this primary market area is predominantly owner occupied with limited options for households seeking market rate or affordable rental housing. The primary market contained 15,227 housing units that were occupied by seniors. Of the 77% were owner occupied, 23% were renter occupied." So, not a lot of rental housing stock, and as Glenn said, you have a number of folks who are looking to either, you know, continue to live in the community that they were raised in, or that they've lived in all their lives and they've raised families, but can no longer afford to live in their own home and need to downsize into these, to these units. The site, in the same market study, there's a discussion about absorption and how long it will take for these units to be absorbed, which would be very quickly, but it also notes that only two other developments that would even meet the same criteria that this project are located in the market area, one being in Hanover, Webster Village, and one being in Brockton. So, and I think we all know the reason why a project of this size hasn't been approved in Abington in a long time has to do with water and sewer capacity. We've had conversations with the water and sewer, each their respective departments, with the joint waterworks in Rockland, Abington, and also with the sewer commissioners here in town. With that, I don't want to go in too much further. I could probably talk for hours and hours about the need for affordable housing in Massachusetts, but I don't know that that's helpful to our cause, but I'm happy to answer any questions about rents and income limits and the availability of these units and the lottery process in which these, the statutory units will be released, including residential requirements and preferences for Abington residents, et cetera, et cetera. But I think the most important thing we have to talk about on a project like this is what the design and whether or not it's overbearing. I think many of you know Sevi Streklovsky, who's our local architect. We also have our civil engineer and our surveyor team is here, and we also, before you have a traffic study that we already prepared as well, and we're happy to answer any questions. I'll turn it over to Sevi, you'll have to take the microphone, Sevi.
Can I just ask one question to you?
Sure.
Does the tax rate go up in town of Abington because of this project? I just was wondering. With the state involved and everything, does our tax rate go up in town of Abington?
Uh, no.
Okay.
I mean, your levy limit would probably go up because you have...
It has nothing to do with our tax rate, though.
Has nothing to do with your tax. This process doesn't. We could talk about municipal finance and how that, but yeah, no, I mean, the town will benefit from additional taxes that will be received as a result, your levy limit will go up.
By getting this project in here, it's not going to raise our taxes?
No.
Okay. Just wanted to check that.
Good evening, I'm Sevi Streklovsky, Streklovsky Architecture from Ingham, and it's a delight to be back in Abington. We're very proud of having been involved in the design of the town hall, which still looks pretty good. Our experience since starting the firm in '78 and from a lot of multifamily housing projects, starting with the Keystone Building in Dorchester, which was a unique project, and now being a senior, I'm particularly very interested in a community that becomes one that's a wonderful place to age in place and to find other uses that don't involve going long distances. The worst thing is to be out in the middle of nowhere where you depend on others for transportation. What we're proposing is a building that, really two buildings, to create a sense of community, to break up the masses of the building into something which the residents will be proud of, it's a, has a sense of place, it's two buildings connected by an open bridge which will enable the residents to go back and forth, to communicate, to feel secure in that. It also breaks up the site by not having one large building that you have to go around. You go through it, you have many spaces outside the building, but it's really a sense of village, and the location is extraordinary, being right next to the senior center and close to the train. So, it's really a unique opportunity, as I say, to age in place. These are some elevations which show variety of materials. We've got sitting areas at either end of the, of the bridge connection, so that there's a lot of activity. Nobody's going to feel institutionalized in any way. There is a community space on the lower level, there is outdoor sitting space, near activity areas. And in plan, you can see the typical floor plan where, where the community space on the lower level has kitchen, patio, a variety of activities possible, and the buildings open out into that as well as connect to each other. So, we think it'll be a great sense of arrival, home, and particularly with this beautiful site with the long access from Plymouth Street, it's going to be quite a setting and a unique community for seniors. Thank you.
Could I just ask you one question? Why is the building so far away from the street and so close to the railroad tracks? I mean, it seems like, they seem to be, the whole project is pushed so far back attention to where the railroad tracks are. Is there a reason why the project is...
Well, that is the upland, and it's also nearest the senior center, so that the entrance road is not a place where you can build in that larger part of the site.
I just thought it was kind of strange how it's pushed all the way back.
Yeah, well, that's why. We kept it, we oriented it so we get as much sun as possible into the units. We pulled it away from the train as much as possible, it's not right up against it.
There's a noise.
But it's interesting, when we designed the Keystone Building, there was a great concern for noise from the expressway, and that's where everybody wanted to be, they didn't want to look in the woods, they wanted to be there where there was something happening. But, you know, that can be designed around any opening for air conditioners, window insulation will eliminate any noise issue.
Just to add to that, when you're taking into account a large site like this, the idea to appease the neighborhood is generally, on a site this, on a design this large, you want to keep it as far away from the front of the street as possible.
Yeah, you are, you're very far away from the road, I recognize that, but I just found it kind of strange that it's close to the tracks, to just...
That's just the site, the way that the site is...
And is there an easement on the other side, too, Edison?
Yeah. It's a small one, you can see it on the...
And you're right there, the pockylock kind of lands right there, too, doesn't it?
There's a small easement on the corner, on that upper corner.
And why do we have the road going that way instead of going to, going to the...
Senior Center.
Senior Center itself. I mean, I mean, do we, do we have a reason for that, for it to be going?
Uh, yeah, we had a number of conversations with the, with the members of the selectmen and with the town administrator and with folks from the senior center itself, who felt that a, an access road, full access road, might not be something that they wanted to have, but yet have emergency access would be the best solution for them.
So, we put it in, a road in between two houses? That's a better thing?
It's where the road, the road works there.
Well, it just seems to me it's...
Unless you live in the store.
Right, exactly. I just, I just see it kind of strange, you're building that long road and, well, you could have went the other way, had a shorter road, and the access is right there, and the senior citizen's, go right there, they don't have to, they don't have to drive all the way around, go through the set of lights. It's just a strange setup, that's all, that's what I recognize. Okay, what do we have next? Any questions, guys?
We're done.
Anything? Any questions?
I have questions, but I'd rather wait until we hear from the folks out there. Well, did you say you're going to have input from the...
Well, not right now. Do you have any questions for gentlemen?
Yeah, I have some questions. Just, could you explain a little bit more on the age restriction? How is that going to work? Is that going to be in perpetuity, or is that something that's going to fade away at some point in time, or... How is that guaranteed that it's going to be...
We'll have a regulatory agreement in place, and we can do in perpetuity, but generally it's a 40-year.
Yeah, there'll be a restrictive covenant recorded as part of that, as, you know, is required by DHCD.
We also do a springing covenant, a spring, a spring restriction, so once that expires, the town's restriction kicks in. How will you, how will you overcome DHCD's policy on 55 and over where it does not... not count on the SHI?
You know, the reality is, is that we, we put in for fifty-five and older under the, under the application because it was allowable, but in many cases, what happens is we restrict it to sixty-two and over. At the, at the, at the start of the development, we can say, this is going to be sixty-two and over, however we set the rules. So those are...
So if it's fifty-five and over, then you're not guaranteed one hundred and forty-four units on your SHI, according to DHCD policy? Because you have to allow families. So, so therefore, under, if it's sixty-two and over, the DHCD policy doesn't kick in. So I think the most important thing to think about is whatever, you know, if this project goes forward, that the town gets credit for one hundred and forty-four units, because that would bring you eight units shy of ten percent, and you could get safe harbor.
Or you could add the eight units and get safe harbor.
That's something to consider also.
I was reading something on the age restrictions that said for senior housing, there also had to be a total net worth, I think, to qualify of, I think it was below two hundred and seventy-five thousand in terms of assets that they had or were going to be sold to, to qualify for admission?
On the income calculation?
Mm-hmm.
So the income calculation on the asset side is imputed. So it's imputed at, you know, at two percent of your assets' value. But generally speaking, on the compliance side, and we have a management company that's identified in this that will be doing the lottery and the management, Housing Management Resources out of Quincy. They have nine thousand units nationwide. They, they do a lot of these. But not speaking too much to that regulation, I will say that on the, the imputing of the income is generally around two percent of the asset value, yeah, towards the annual income. So that's where that two seventy-five or so comes from. Because if you add that to, if you take two percent of that and add it to a, just if you're using, say, anywhere from, you know, fourteen hundred dollars a month to three thousand dollars a month on a social security income, that's, that's where you'd come out to.
And what's the basis for your request for a waiver of all town-related permitting fees?
It's a routine request. You know, I'll be, the real reason that we put them in is that if the zoning board does not approve, you know, denies the project, and we're forced to take them to the Housing Appeals Committee, then we want some way to recover our costs of having to litigate. If we're working cooperatively.
What's the figure on that? Do we know? Do we have an idea, and you're asking for it?
I don't.
How much the permits are?
Well, yeah, I mean, what's that, like a hundred grand?
Oh, yeah. It's a big number.
All right. And, I mean, you're asking all our inspectors to basically work for, or on the taxpayer's dime on a for-profit job?
It's not, it's, it's not necessarily a standard waiver.
Okay.
And also, the way that it's written is incorrect, because it's written for relief from, and a general waiver for all building fees, building permit fees, et cetera. They cannot waive, we cannot waive any state fees. So a lot of these fee, a lot of these permit fees have a state fee and then a local fee. But again, I, I don't see this on all, on every single forty B.
Okay, thank you.
And this might be maybe more of a question for Town Council, but so you're seeking waivers essentially from the conditions that you've identified, and then sort of a general waiver saying if any of these change, we don't want to have to come back and seek additional relief. So I guess who's minding the store? If something goes awry and there's some issue that, you know, you've gone above and beyond what you initially requested, and there's an issue with it, who was the ability to sort of stop it? Or are you just free to continue with, in whatever way you see fit?
Mechanically, the way that this ideally plays out is, I work with Town Council, and we draft a very careful decision where certain waivers are granted, and we agree to not request, you know, to drop certain other, I mean, there are certain waivers we absolutely have to have. For example, height, okay? Your height limit's, I think, thirty-five. Our buildings are forty-six feet tall. You know, you know, they're listed there. There are others that...
Excuse me. Is that the highest building in town? Do you know?
These buildings seem to me to be, they would become the tallest buildings in town. Like the high school, maybe forty feet.
Well, I was just thinking about the safety, you know, fire department, ladders, trucks, and getting way back there.
Do we have the municipal equipment?
Right.
To manage a building this size?
My guess is your fire department tower is a hundred and twenty feet. I had the gas correct.
Well, I think it's only a hundred, right, chief?
Right.
Yeah, so you're kind of pushing it on that. I mean, these are questions, so...
No, they're all, they're all fair questions, but the, I mean, the, the answer is that if we work through all this stuff, we end up with a permit that everybody can live with, and we agree to it, and it's, it's well-drawn. And so that there aren't questions like that that come up in the future.
Going back to your original question, we would deny a general blanket waiver. You do not have to grant general blanket waivers. The regulations require that they submit a list of waivers, and that list has to be specific to each waiver, so...
To take it one step further, there are some zoning boards who will sometimes just vote a flat-out denial without any reasons whatsoever. And so the reason that we put in such a comprehensive waiver list is so that we end up at the next level. You know, we're in a position to work with the Housing Appeals Committee, you know, having asked for everything that we could possibly need. What we really want to do in this process is narrow this so it's appropriately tailored for this project.
I did that. Go ahead.
I had another question. I don't have the entire application package, but I didn't have any evidence of site control. Was that submitted?
Yes, yeah, that's...
It was? What was submitted? A purchase and sale or ownership deeds? What was submitted?
Uh, the deed.
Okay.
It's in the mass housing package. So I know that there was roughly thirty copies distributed through Town Hall.
Sean, can you, you had mentioned about residential requirements, preferential treatment for residence possession. Can you go into that a little bit more?
I think, I think it was actually part of our conversation when maybe you were on the Board of Selectmen on the site. You had asked that question about residential preferences, and, you know, it's, it's not a requirement of these programs or any program, but it is something that we would put in our tenant selection plan to, and it's something that you couldn't, you can put in your decision that forces the developer to do a residential preference. And I think in the case, just knowing what I know, forgetting about the processing and the, and the application piece, this is going to be filled by Abington people, for the most part, because there's, there's a lot of, there's a huge waiting list over at the Housing Authority. There's huge waiting lists at other complexes around the area. Knowing what I know about the industry, there's going to be a lot of Abington people that are going to apply for this. So the tenant selection plan will have an Abington preference. The lottery process, which you can also have some oversight on, will also have a residential preference as well.
Did I see in there your question, your waiver on the handicap parking? Is that something that I saw?
Is that a supplemental handicap parking waiver?
Yeah. We'll drop that one.
I would thank for a senior housing...
Yeah, we'll drop that one. I'm sorry, I missed that.
I didn't, I didn't see that one, so...
Yeah, I missed that one.
Unless it was absolutely necessary for, for distance, I don't think that there would be a need to waive that.
And as far as, I think Glenn mentioned, but as far as plowing the entryway, not just the parking lot, that's not going to be a public road, correct? That's going to be...
That'll be a driveway.
A driveway, so the owner is going to be responsible for that plowing.
Yes, yeah. And, and one of the things, again, industry standard here, is that you want, you want a larger project so that, that the management company can have the economies of scale to allow for, you know, in this case, you have maybe one or two people in the office just on the administrative side, and one or two people on the management, on the maintenance side. So it allows for having onsite management, having this many units on the site.
Will they live there?
I doubt it. I doubt it. And I, I just went through a case where that was something that the board really wanted, and we, we pushed back on that because I think industry-wide, folks are really trying to get away from onsite live-in, on live-in management. And I currently own a project that has that, and I would really love if that person didn't live onsite. It's bad for both sides.
Now, what about the traffic impact assessment? Is there anybody here that represents that?
Um, we, I did not have Jack Yulian come here because there was nothing, there was nothing in the traffic study that would make me think that, you know, that he needed to, there was nothing controversial in the traffic study. He had a limited impact on the, the study. The study speaks for itself, but it's, it's pretty comprehensive. He had the strips out there a number of times and has been out on the site. He's a well-respected traffic engineer in the, in the region, and I've used him on a number of projects, and he's, I think the study was actually pretty comprehensive. And we, we are not required to submit a traffic study, but we did that as, as just a way to expedite the process or to help, help you render a decision.
So when you were discussing and, in your note requesting on one seventy-five forty-three two A, which is aisle width, two-way traffic, where I believe the standard is twenty-five feet, and you're seeking twenty-four feet, do you consider the twenty-four feet two-way as the entryway to the project? Is that your quote-unquote driveway? Because I think in Abington, the roadway's supposed to be thirty-five, yet your, your frontage is thirty-eight, so you really don't have enough space for a true roadway and sidewalk without literally being up against, you know, your buyer's property. So is, is the main entryway, is that driveway twenty-four feet wide?
The driveway is twenty-four feet wide, one-way each side, but we also have a five-foot sidewalk on one side. We are, we are limited to the, we try to keep the driveway really, well, first of all, it's not much traffic using, using sites on-site for residents. And also the best wetland, again, the, the site fire. The reason the site is set all the way back here, because there's a large wetlands here, we have to have a, to go through a couple wetland crossings, but the driveway to come over. And we have, we do have wetland reputation plans on our design, and on the process, we do have to go through the conservation commissions, but we haven't started that process yet because we want to make sure the site layout is set before we go to the commissions. And the onsite driveway is twenty-four foot, I drive aisle, parking nine-by-eighteen, those are pretty much industry standard, especially for residential use. Basically, you know, all the neighboring towns and all the requirements, nine-by-eighteen with twenty-four foot wide aisles.
So the main entryway will be twenty-four feet or...
Twenty-four foot wide, also a sidewalk.
Twenty-four wide, so that's, that's part of the requested relief from one seventy-five forty-three.
How many square feet of wetland will be impacted?
It's less than five thousand.
Okay.
The state limit is five thousand. We, I think we have somewhere around four thousand plus or minus.
Can you speak of the visual relief you're seeking in terms of lighting? I mean, that's always a concern that you're going to be, you know, lighting up the place.
Well, on the package, we do have a lighting print. And we have an outside consultant to help us do the lighting. And all this, all this light, they are, they have the internal shield on the, more like the fixture itself has the internal shield so they can shield the light still over to the...
So it's not a local place.
So they have, they have forced the light shine to the parking lot. And we make a lot of considerations, especially in front of the buildings, when some of them we use the low ball light, so we don't want the light to be shining back towards the resident units.
So if you're trying to be dark sky compliant, why are you seeking relief from the lighting requirements?
I believe it's like, is that...
Yeah, and, yeah, again, you know, I submitted as comprehensive a waiver request as I could because I do that to protect my client. Our intent would be to comply with the lighting requirements and withdraw that waiver. Now, again, when, when, when a board engages and we start talking about these things, it's easy to drop the requests. But if, I don't know coming in whether I'm going to get, I mean, these are highly controversial projects. So, you know, we just have to kind of prepare for the worst and then work with, work with you.
Just, just so the board's aware, what we do is, we come up with a very comprehensive decision. My decisions are approximately twenty to twenty-five pages. And you will vote on each waiver individually. And so if there is a waiver on there that has not been withdrawn, that they do not require, you will deny that waiver.
Right, yeah.
So there will, there's no chance of anything sneaking in, so...
It's good that we're going over them, Mr....
Yeah, and you go over each one, you vote on each one separately. So that night's a long night, but...
I still can't get out of my head in, in the design of it, it just seems to me that the common sense person would look at the project and put the road going the other way to get in and out of the, out of the project.
We would love that.
I know, I just, it's just the common sense behind that just, just really knocks me for it.
We need a town meeting vote for that.
It's just strange.
We got a town meeting vote for that. We got a, you know, a unanimous town meeting vote to negotiate with the town to do that. But I think that there was a significant amount of safety concerns, and they, I mean, the conversation's still on the table. I mean, it's still being discussed, and certainly emergency access will, I don't think has ever been taken off the table. We've had a number of conversations with it.
When you talk about safety, I mean, I know you have a, an impact assessment right there, but I've driven down that street. I, I know where the rotary is, I know where that light is, and when I'm going towards the rotary and I get that green light, I'm starting to move. So to me, I just think that there's more traffic on that road there than it is, was it the other one, Summer?
Summer Street, right. You have Plymouth Street.
I think you're really, I think the town's making a mistake, and that's just my opinion to, to direct all traffic that way with more high traffic volume, if you will. I can understand the railroad tracks being near the, near the project, but I just, just my opinion that putting this road in between two houses and then putting it on that strip where there's more traffic, really doesn't make much sense to me. I mean, if you even talk safety, that's all I'm saying. That's just my opinion.
If you go down and take a look at where the Senior Center is and where this road would be, I would ask you to do that because it's very, I think the reason that...
Why, because it's narrow?
It's very narrow. Very narrow, and I think Public Safety was actually not happy with the fact that there would be a road going in and out of there in that very narrow area. So that was a big consideration as to why. The push was to put it up off of them.
Now, you put it in high traffic volume, though, going the other way, so...
And the other, the other consideration was, I think, coming out of there with the railroad tracks right there.
I do understand that, yeah.
The Senior Center right there, and people walking in the Senior Center, the parking lot is right there, so it was...
And the pickleball, of course.
Yeah, I saw that, too. I was going to ask that question on you. What the heck is pickleball? Yeah, it's just strange the way it looks, though, to me. I mean, in between two houses, it's just strange. And a high volume of traffic going down that street, too.
So since you were part of those initial conversations, if it were to come into So since you were part of those initial conversations, if it were to come into the senior housing area off of Summer Street, would that then become a public road that we would end up?
You'd have to get, they, they have to get an easement granted, there's a lot of, a lot to it, I think. It's not just, it would be maybe some public bidding that would have to go, other people might be able to put in to get that easement as well, so it was.
Well, it, it's just good to explain why we're doing it this way too, why this project is leaning towards that way. My, my opinion though is that the traffic.
Believe me, these guys, first off, that's where they want to come in.
Yes, okay, all right, you would know.
And it, and it wasn't just a flash in the pan conversation, we had.
Right, no, it was long.
We delayed our, we delayed our conversations and Mass Housing delayed their decision on the project eligibility contingent on those conversations. The town meeting vote, the conversations with the council on aging, but ultimately it would just, it, the, the purchasing requirements and procurement and, and all that, coupled with the fact that there was some safety concerns, coupled with the fact that the, you know, the comprehensive permit law does not allow for the permit to be contingent on acquisition of public land, so.
I understand, but I did, when I look at the projects, all I see is people going down the road, bearing left, taking a right and driving all the way around just to get to a building if they were driving, I would say.
Yeah.
I mean, where they could have just went straight up. But I understand now, I mean, that's, that's good, that's why we brought it up.
Yeah.
Just to find out where that's coming from, okay.
It's a beautiful road.
Oh, it's a straight road, yeah. I mean, how can you screw up a straight road? But, yeah, I mean, again, when I look at the project, I mean, there's those two houses right there. And I still think this high-speed volume you're dealing with there. And I do understand the railroad tracks on the other street, but to me, I just hope there's not more accidents, yeah, that's all. That's what, that's what I'd be concerned with if I lived there. But, all right, any more questions and concerns?
Not right now.
Amy?
I do not right now.
Well, I have a couple around parking.
Go, go for it.
I mean, generally one, uh, single-bedroom houses in, in Abington, we require 1.3 spaces per, I mean, it looks like you're seeking a significant amount of parking relief. So like to scale about?
About 60 spaces, yeah. We're asking for 230 and.
60 to 80, right.
And require 280-ish.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I guess when I look at this, you know, you're looking for visual relief on the lots, you know, and the, the, the idea behind that clause in our bylaws is to break up big expanses of, of tarmac and to make it, you know, put in some landscaping and some grass strips and that sort of thing, as we require most of the parking lots and malls and that sort of thing to be. And, you know, when you have, I mean, you know, it's the old 1.3 spaces per single, that's, that's to allow relatives to visit and, and that sort of thing. It just seems like a very large, seems like you're going to have two large buildings and then irrespective of having a couple trees on your, on your cover page there, then it's just going to be tarmac. You know, it's just going to be a wide expanse of, of parking and, and that is not enough parking for what we require here in town.
And I understand that, I, I, I just want to talk to that a lot. I mean, a lot of times the parking conversation that we have in front of a lot of boards is, is relative to, if you don't have enough parking, where are they going to park? They're going to park on the streets. That's not going to happen here.
Right.
You're so far off of the, off of Plymouth Street, you're so far off of Summer Street, nobody's going to be parking on the sides of the roads.
Take an Uber.
Yeah, right, yeah, they'll either take an Uber to park on the road and then come, come into the site. This, taking into account the fact that there is a, a large parking requirement and this is age-restricted, where, you know, the, the households, you know, generally speaking, have one car for a one-bedroom as opposed to, you know, 1.3 cars. And for, you know, one car for a two-bedroom as opposed to 2.6 cars, you know, we felt like anything more than 144 was, was definitely supportive of the site, but we have over 200 spaces. And, you know, one of the things that, that the, these calculations do is they create, they create some protections for the town so that people aren't parking all over the place and that we have some order. But also what happens is on, on larger projects, you, you might be faced with these huge expansive spaces that just look bad because they'll be empty.
Right.
And, and also to put in 260 spaces in an age-restricted, you know, where you have a number of residents who will be mobility impaired, there's no possible way to, to put that many spaces close enough to the building, you know, so. So even if we had 280 spaces right up next to the building, you know, we'd still have complaints about nobody could find parking close to the building, you know. So, I mean, having been around a, a number of elderly developments, I can tell you that this is ample parking, this is, in my opinion.
And I, I tend to agree with you on that, but at the same time, you know, it's the other side of the, of the coin as well, where from what I looked at when I was looking at the designs is you have the two buildings and then again, it's surrounded by, you know, there aren't, there aren't any strips, there aren't any grassings, it doesn't appear to be any landscaping, or at least I didn't see any landscaping pages, you know, on that, so.
But then you got.
But, you know, so.
Well, acres of open space.
Right, eventually.
Yeah.
Yeah, so on the one hand, you're saying we don't really need that many park, that much parking, which I agree with, but then on the other hand, it's going to be two acres of tar.
I guess no tripping hazards or like that. Where, where the entrance is and the two houses are there, what are you going to do for the neighborhood, the neighbors, if it's built, to keep from, you know, headlights going into their?
Light intrusion, not everything.
Right. I mean, have you talked to the neighbors about that at all?
We, we haven't had any conversations at this point.
I mean, when I, you look at the project and you see where, where it's being located, I think it's by, like two driveways and boom, there's your, your road going in. So I hope you, if this does get passed, I hope you guys will work with the neighborhood that's there.
Absolutely.
Because any type of issues like that, I'm just saying, you know, you really need to work with the neighborhood on that one. You guys got anything else?
Not right now.
At this point.
No.
You want to open up to the floor?
All right, I'm going to open up to the floor, but one at a time and what we'll do is if you raise your hand, we'll.
State your address.
Go and state your address.
Name an address.
Name an address and we'll start. Sir?
Good evening, I'm Mr.
You can come right up if you want.
My name is Brian Woodford, my address is 808 Washington Street. I live in town with my wife and three children. And besides living in town, I also work in town and am an elder law attorney. So this project would greatly benefit my industry, help me support my family and bring a lot of, you know, I think benefits to not just me, but other members who serve as seniors of the town. But also from a public policy standpoint, not a personal standpoint, I'm receiving calls on a weekly basis from seniors who, like they've said, are on these waiting lists. And they are out of options and unfortunately they may be forced into nursing homes and/or predatory reverse mortgages or even worse, sometimes having to move back in with their children. So, you know, I unequitably support this project and thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Chief?
I'm John Arnold, the fire chief. I just have a few questions and a couple of comments on this. I first saw the plot plan, I think it was early last week, getting the package, and I think immediately I called the owner, his represent, one of his representatives, because we had some concerns with the, the access in here. Now, the fire department, our, our, the reality with this is we're concerned with access, egress and water supply. A project like this is absolutely going to increase call volume to this area. This is kind of comparable to 585 Chestnut Street, somewhat to the Woodlands, and some of the other projects in town. Just looking at the call volume, we did, we did an initial study about nine months ago when, when we first started hearing about the first ideas on this, and we're looking probably about anywhere from 150 to about 188 calls per year that will be averaging increase in going to this. That's the reality, it's what it is. So we want to make sure that we have ample access coming in, not just to the big ladder truck, everybody thinks the tow truck, we need room, which we do, but realistically, the, the calls are going to be generated from a project like this tend to be more medical, emergency medical, which would include an ambulance and an engine. They're much smaller vehicles, however, looking at how this was set up, some of the history we've had with some of the other projects in town and a lot of the other properties are much larger, we're building much, still large things in a much smaller lot. We've been seeing that trend over the last 10 years with projects and it's beginning to affect our access and egress getting out of there. So that's the reason I'm here tonight with a concern. I, I met with Mr. Lapointe a couple of times, I called him immediately, he came down with my concerns. Really, if I can turn this or you can see it, ready? It has to do with the, this traffic parking aisle in the middle. Now, the two main entrances are here, I believe, I have not seen an elevation chart yet, so another question I'm going to have is what is the height of this bridge? What's that?
Chief, what page is that, do you know? What's it saying?
C2, it looks like.
What's C2, what did you say?
C2A.
C2. It's just really a plot plan of the, um, several hours parking.
Sorry.
So there's a, I think it's about 15 spaces in the middle of this, which, which really kind of breaks up this whole axis as you pull in. They did change it, they, they put about a 60-foot diameter turning radius, I don't think that's going to be enough, to be honest with you. Again, even for the ambulance, the access we want to get in, but we also want to get the egress out, especially if it's an emergency medical, we want to get out of it quick. If we're just clearing a call because we're, it was a false alarm or anything, usually we have time to get the larger apparatus out, the ambulance has to fly. So that's our concern, we don't want to get blocked in here. My proposal, and I spoke to him either today or yesterday, is why don't we just eliminate this entirely? Maybe in the future you could always add spaces back. I know parking's at a, a concern for you, but so is the access and egress of our equipment. If we simply eliminate this, unfortunately it's more pavement, I like pavement.
No tripping.
We don't like the obstacles that get in the way of us trying to maneuver the apparatus. At least if that is clear from the beginning, if this project is approved and built, once we get familiar with the project, if we're, if we find that, you know what, there is going to be enough room, maybe you could at that point go back and add some spaces. I, I think that's fair and I think that's a smart way to do it, I'd rather do it on paper than try to dig up the pavement later on.
How many, how many spaces is that, chief? That should.
I, it was like 15, I think, roughly.
I think it was roughly 12.
12.
They, they did alter it the other day, so initially it may have been 15, it may be down to 12. But even at that, I'm looking at this coming in, this is tight, it's already a narrow entrance coming in, god forbid we have anybody parking here, that could block our access entirely. We're seeing that in, on some of the newer roads in town already, but the width is, is becoming an issue. Vehicles are simply wider now. So if we eliminate that, I think that's going to help us to be able to, to operate in this building. We did have a failed fire over Christmas Eve in a comparable type of a project like this, so this, this is real, this, and we're going to 585 Chestnut Street literally every day on emergency calls, so. If this is comparable to that, that number of 150, 180 average could be way up there, it's just the reality we have. So we're definitely going to need this. The second concern I have, which is hydrants and water supply, and again, Mr. Lapointe was amendable on this, this is, I think, a 1,200-foot drive entry. Our apparatus carried 1,000 feet of foreign supply hose, that's the hose from the hydrant to the truck. So that, we need hydrants in the middle as well as on either end of that, which is not a big deal, but I think the initial plan didn't have that. We don't want to just have one or two hydrants up here and if we find out they're frozen, we're out of options, so, you know, that, that's going to give us more options. The other question I had again, and these are preliminary, they can change, but what is the height of the bridge? Do you have that? I got to make, is this a bridge we're going to drive under?
Yes.
I have to make sure not only our trucks, because we have a tow truck, but our neighboring neutral aid trucks can also fit in with that.
Well, we, we have some, some options because we can, we can eliminate a connector at this level, so I guess whatever you need, I think we can.
Okay, and again, that's in the future, once we really start looking at the project.
So I need to know what.
I just haven't seen any elevation plans on that. Okay, thank you. One last comment, just again, the reason why the, the main access road's not going through the senior center, that was, I think, police and fire, we, we had some serious concerns on that. Not only the railroad tracks in Summer Street, but this would have brought this within feet of the front door of the senior center.
All right.
And it's not just, you know, sometimes you're having kids there, you're having youth or sports groups, the sheer that nights or weekends for different parties, that, we, we just envisioned that, that really was going to be a pedestrian risk.
How do, how do you feel about, just, just a quick question? One elevator per building.
Are we used to that?
We good with that? Because I know where, where low, lowly drive.
I mean, they always want two, I'm a fire chief, we always want a 2B, but realistically, that usually is one.
In lowly drive and branchy, we've had issues with the elevator going out.
We have it right now at 585 Chestnut as well, if you could do two, that would be better, again, that's.
I'm just bringing it up because we have that issue in branchy where, where the elevator goes out for three or four weeks in, in elderly complexes and we have to bring the people down by chair. It's just a thought.
If you have a connecting bridge, that is kind of.
That is, yeah, that's true too, yeah. And they have access to the other elevator.
Right. I just have, I have to ask, defer to the architect on that, I haven't seen plans. We're just still, really just looking at the, the plot planes and the access.
Chief, do you have any problems with the height of the, overall height of the building and the equipment we have in town?
What was the height again on this?
46.
Really, it's, with us, it's, the aerial's 100 feet. And without getting into geometry and trigonometry today, it's the angle that we have, we've used 100 feet on Green Street on some of those houses, if we have two feet of snow to get to a chimney. So as long as we can have access pretty much around here, it, you know, it's not the overall height, it's the reach, exactly, it's, it's kind of a, the angle of that reach. Looking at this here, as, as long as we can kind of get around with these spaces, we, we should be okay. I'm not too, too concerned about that.
Are there fire lanes around the entire, all of the buildings? I didn't see any.
I'm not seeing any fire lanes, I'm seeing parking around and as long as.
Right.
I'm not sure what the width between these are, I can't.
It's only, it's, the proposal's 24 feet of width.
Including the parking or?
Drive aisle 24.
Okay.
So is that okay?
It should be.
And you can get around all four sides of each building?
No, but that's, as long as we can get three sides, this is the first building we cannot, it's, it's kind of two ways we can, the, the rear building, it appears that we can, as long as nobody parks there.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. Okay, next person?
What's your name?
Name and address?
Suzanne Jessberg, I'm the director for the council on aging. For our audience at home, can you explain your affordable housing, what the parameters would be, how much per month? Not holding you to it, but what is affordable to some seniors is not affordable to others.
The one-bedroom rents would be once 1163 and the two-bedrooms would be 50.
And my other comment would be, I do.
Those, no, I'm sorry, those are the national.
Okay.
So it may be under that, it was additional subsidy.
I do disagree with parking. I have a lot of seniors, they're in one-bedroom apartments and they do have two cars, so that would be my other concern. Even though I do support a senior center, we need senior housing in this town, 1,100 to 1,200 is a lot of money for a senior.
Do you apply for that?
Right.
Hi, hi, my name is Alicia Miranda, I live at 1105 Plymouth Street, I'm also a ladder through this project, my property goes behind the needs of them. My main concerns is, I think it's great to have a senior center in town, because as Suzanne said, we need to have some, all of our seniors, but what you were talking about 40B, it's only 35 units that will be at that rate, so what about the other 109 units, the one and two bedrooms, what are the rates of those going to be?
The, the application is, is for the minimum, so the affordable rents are 1163 and 5058 for the balance, the market rents could be 80. For the balance, the market rents could be 1,800 to 2,200.
So basically, 35 units are going to be available.
Well, hold on, hold on, let me answer. That is what the application, so that's the maximum rent on the, on the application, and it's the rents that we provided to the financing agency for the balance of it. Keep in mind, any number of financing strategies could be utilized here, including owing housing tax credits, or utilization of the Affordable Housing Trust from the state, and all of those rents would be reduced based on development subsidies that would be received by the, by the Department of Housing and Community Development, or Mass Housing, or any number of agencies that are out there. Additionally, we could be applying for, um, project-based Section 8, or, um, or other subsidies that will allow for the rents to be lowered. This is the application that, that gives us the widest berth, and then once we, once the approvals happen, then we fine-tune it. I mean, more than likely, there's going to be additional subsidies on this project. Yeah.
And you're putting in for 55 and older, which, as the council had said, kind of opens up to families, and the whole point of this is to give, it's called Abington Senior Housing. So I would recommend that, you know, the boy will look at making it 62 as the middle age, and not 55, um, otherwise I'd be moving in there next year. So, you know what I mean? I mean, it's for seniors, so I think 62 would be better, better. And my last point was, 58, I live on 58, and there's not a lot of light in there. The two houses that were built there cried to this project being started. No sidewalks ever put in. There's no sidewalk from the house before all the way down to Woodman Line. People walk it every day, going to the train. So that's an issue. Lighting's an issue out there on 58. You know, headlights going in my neighbor's front door every day, and it's hard to pull off. I can't, I have a hard time pulling out from my driveway every day, never mind having approximately maybe 200 cars coming in and out every day. So that's going to be, there'll be an issue there. There's going to be some accidents, because the cars, as I said, come flying by at the light all the way down to Woodman. So it should be addressed with that. That's it.
Call me names, I live at 1019 Plymouth Street, so I am one of the houses...
12.
1019 is the, uh, the green or, the greenish gray one, the left side of the road. Kind of picking, piggybacking upon what she said, but just, um, the lighting, the safety, the road 58 is, is obviously are, is very dangerous as it is. I live there with my husband, and we have a one-year-old son. We're always in the backyard, there's, I mean, we don't go up front, just because it is so busy, so I am concerned about, um, again, all those cars coming in and out of that road, the new road if it is, um, if that building is built, and, um, I think it would be a good job. But, yeah, please remember, I don't get that coming out.
Okay, thank you.
I live at 996 Plymouth Street, I have the same concern.
Name, sir, I'm sorry.
Peter Sepulveda.
Okay.
And, uh, the, the traffic is absolutely crazy on that road. I have four kids. I hear all these guys, I mean, we don't agree with that road.
Does be an access.
I'm on 106 Plymouth Street, on my cross street from the driveway, very entrance, and yeah, same concerns. It's going to be a lot of, a lot more traffic than you're reading about.
I agree with, I forget who said it, but talking with the neighbors as to if it is approved and if it is built, like what can we do for the surrounding neighborhood, the sidewalks or things like that to make our side of it a little safer, like I can bring my kids in the car to walk them, you know, but things like that, it's just, it's already dangerous. There will probably be more accidents, and the fire chief was saying there'll be, you know, many times they come down there, a lot, so it's just going to be, but, um, but I think it would be good to talk to the neighbors, just to see, like, if it is done, then what could we do to make, you know, the neighborhood and, because a lot of the houses there have children. All my neighbors have kids, so just, I know the bus stop isn't that, um, I know, I waited at the crosswalk for at least, I felt like 10 minutes, and everyone was just flying. And I have a baby, you know, I'm pushing a baby, and no one stops, it's very fast. So if we could do something to make it a little safer.
Thank you.
Sir? Harry Jones, 1010 Plymouth Street. Question. So this was going to be, if this builds, by lottery? And that lottery totally restricted to Abington residents or any resident of any town?
The lottery's wide open, but we will have an Abington preference on the lottery, and that will be put into the decision.
So Abington residents first, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll give you an example. We just did a project in Plymouth, and they, they, we had 100 people talking about Plymouth residents only, Plymouth residents only, and we said, okay, we'll put a Plymouth residence preference in. We had zero Plymouth residents apply to lottery. So we had to go to, actually, one of the residents was from that. But it's oceanfront, so I guess that was okay. You know, to be honest with you, I think having residence preference is fine. I think it's, I think it's a great idea, but, um, but, but if, if Abington residents don't apply, then, then...
Say you have residents that apply from Woodman?
Rockland.
Rockland? Any town. How can you exclude them?
Well, when the, first, the initial lottery happens, the way that it works is you have a 60-day period, so first, DHD has to approve the lottery process, okay? So DHD approves the lottery process, which we say we're marketing to folks in Abington, we're, we're letting the town of Abington know that this lottery is happening, but these 38 units, these 38 units specifically. If we get 100 applicants, and they were all from Abington, then they're going to be the only ones in the pool, you know, is what I'm saying. It might be applicants from Quincy, Woodman, Brockton, you know, Bedford.
So once you take the 38 applicants out, the remainder, are they open to surrounding town?
All, no, the, the rest of the units, the, the, the non-statutory units? They don't have to be. They don't have to be. They can be open to, we can have a residence preference on the entire project.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine.
Okay. Sir? Name, address?
My name's Governor Charlie, and I live at 443 Adams Street, now 58. I'm 60 years old, and I've been here 18 years. I volunteer quite a bit in the town, I coach youth football programs, and things that I get involved with with my church, CCD and etc. I've been told I'm number 104 on the list for housing. I've been waiting, I've had a cancer, bladder cancer, had 23 tumors removed from my bladder, five different procedures. I've been waiting for the list. I'm number 104. So all I ask for everybody in this room tonight is pray that I make it to the top. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, yes, ma'am?
Ian Riley, I'm up to 220 Plymouth Street. I just have a comment to say about walking children on the streets, any street in town, Bedford Street, Washington Street, Plymouth Street, they're all difficult to walk with children, and that's why I actually have been working so hard, I've got to prove this area, is to have more walking paths and places for parents to take their children down to the, um, uh, riding field there with the, by the, being conscious. It's difficult because nowadays, people just speed, and they don't care about wearing leggings, so I don't think it's typical for the street.
Well, it's not sidewalk, though. I mean, it stops, and it's never, houses are built, my house was built 24 years ago, and it never, you aren't going to buy hard to dump in my house either.
Well, you can down to one, Washington Street with sidewalks, they had put in a, or not only a curve and all that kind of stuff, but there's a sign that's holding them, and it is, I feel for any of the children, and I, when I have my grandchildren, I worry about it too, but it's, I think it's typical all over town, that everybody's in a rush, and it's not always just, you have the people that are holding up the thing, I mean...
That's people playing through on time.
Exactly, exactly. So I feel for you, but come down the bridges and walk trails, they're going to have, yeah, I, and, um, but that's all I have to say here.
Okay. Anyone else?
Linda Holt, and I live at 1009 Plymouth, which is a quarter of the airport. My concern is, what are you going to talk about? Emergency vehicles getting in and out. Okay, if I don't think they're getting in, how fast are they going to get people out? My daughter can't even walk my grandson across the street, his school bus, that would have them stand there, and Dodge cars, I'll wait 10 minutes for somebody to be nice enough to stop. What can you do to make this kind of be a safe place for these elderly? They have medical conditions, and they're stuck right at the end of that driveway, because I know I have difficulty coming in and out. So that's my main concern right now. I didn't realize that it's going to be 144 units. When I purchased the house, I was told that they would not be able to see the housing with it, it's going to be this large. So my other concern is the traffic, and going by the yards, because it's such a narrow road, and I have my grandchildren with me, and she has a baby on the next side. So I want yous to really consider maybe having an emergency exit for yous, because I would, I would be very angry if something happened to somebody that I knew, because you couldn't get out of Plymouth Street.
The rusher issues?
Yeah, go right in.
Actually, the emergency rest would go only for emergency vehicles through that contested portion, past the, um, senior center line to Summer Street. We'd be gaining over, we're not quite sure exactly, you know, we do some control.
Well, chief, are you going to, are you going to respond that way, or are you going to respond to regular street?
We would probably go to regular street, unless we know that somebody's going to spot.
Okay.
But there is a Plan B, what's probably our concern, as long as it's maintained.
And the other question is, the property values are high, homes going to go down because of so much traffic and so much, um, use being there. That can affect any, any of the homes, because I know a lot of people have lived there many years. I've only been there too. But I don't want to lose any value on my own, because you won't turn one eye because of, you know, 100 and some cars coming out right beside me, or I'm going to be listening to, you know, God bid, ambulances and so forth, going in and out, or an elderly who shouldn't be driving anymore by the bid, but it does happen, I mean, there's a lot of things that...
There are concerns. Yeah, I understand that. There are concerns, I understand.
Hi, I'm Brian Hillstone, 1071 Plymouth Street. My concern is the two houses, the driveway come out. I think it's a great project for the town. I do work with Glenn and his guys, the great guys. But my concern is, I hear the people saying safety wise going out the other way, why can't they make an access road, I mean, a road out the other way? Why does that have to be between these two houses? I try to get, I have a trailer, I do a landscape on the side, and I can't get out of my house. I mean, I get people to blow by me, even with all my lights on my trucks. I don't know how far the Abington Woods is, but they were able to get a road out there. I mean, why is there a safety reason for that, for Summer Street, but there's no safety reason for Plymouth Street, which is way more violent than Summer Street? I just don't understand why they can't, I mean, because these two houses, I mean, it's real close.
Yeah.
It is.
So to answer your question, if we had an access road beside the senior center, we have parking on one side, and it is so narrow that we cannot even get the fire trucks if people are parked around it. That's why there's no access right there.
It just seems weird.
That's why the town decided that it wasn't safe. It's not safe for my seniors coming out, and if there's an emergency. With the railroad tracks there, I do a lot of, um, community events with kids, with sports. It's just wasn't, it was a major safety issue. That's why we couldn't have it on Plymouth Street.
No, I understand that, but just that the two houses...
Right, and I understand...
They have kids too, so it's, it is really safety for them too.
Right.
Their kids are playing in the yard, and besides the, you know, one or two feet out the, you know, this major traffic comes through there.
Right, and I get that, because I have kids too. There's going to be happy medium.
Yeah.
Well, but the property is basically, it's locked, landlocked, really. You know, it has, you know, so 58, unless you get easement going through senior, that's the only access.
Well, I think the emergency easement, we've talked about this, and I think it's a great idea to have an emergency, we just have to tweak how we're going to manage that, because I know that people, there is off of Shaw Ave, there's a rotary, and you're not supposed to use it, but I have a ton of mommies that do. So there's just something we have to kind of still talk about. You guys do. I don't know. I'm challenging it.
Nobody does.
Yes.
Hey, Glenn. Stand on that, move it over, build your road.
If we do it, it would be, um, it would, it would be great. But we have pickleball there, we have the dog park going into that. There's a lot of traffic. There's a, you know, there's a ton of traffic going in.
58, every minute.
Right, and I get that, but you go down to the senior center, and you try to get out, and that train goes by, you're not, you're not going to get out. I mean, I live on Central Street, and there's times where I'm going down there, and they let all the passengers out in the train, and you're waiting. So there's, you know, there's issues on either side, but as far as senior housing, there's a five to seven wait for senior housing. I have eight-year-olds waiting. Now, I don't know if they can afford this senior housing, but if they could, they would.
So you've got this gentleman here that's a 104 on the list. So if this gets built, he still has to go into the lottery process. You can't take the existing seniors that are on senior housing waitlist and put them in. So that's, to me, it's not even, shouldn't even be called Abington Senior Housing, it should be called Abington Housing. Honestly, it just doesn't seem like it's benefiting seniors, to be honest with you. There's only a memo on how many units are going to be available, affordable. I keep saying that. On a railroad as well, I know how this works, it's just, it's not going to get up here, but the seniors are going to be.
Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Pam Muirhead, and I live at 1026 Plymouth Street, directly across from the proposed access. I'm horrified at the headlights, I'm horrified at the traffic. But I have a question about why are there two-bedroom apartments in the proposal? Who's going to be living in the other apartments? The seniors? If it is age-restricted, if we get that, um, you allow, uh, you know, some eight-year-old person's 50-year-old son or daughter or family to move in? That's, these are my concerns, truly, above and beyond all the safety issue.
I can't answer, I can't answer that, because I don't know who's going to live in the complex, but you know what the likely response is, and this is coming from experience, nothing else, is that it's generally in elderly housing, it's husband, wife, and separate bedrooms. So, um, that's, that's the reality. And, and I can tell you that, um, being on an ownership team of an 85-unit, 100% Section 8 complex, and they're both under Boston, and each unit's tiny, and is, there's two-bedroom units there, they are, they have a longer wait, because under the rules, if you have two people, you can, you can apply to the two-bedroom. If you have one person, you can't apply to the two-bedroom, you know, unless they market it, because that one is all restrictive. So the reality is, is that, um, you know, you have people, you know, a husband and wife or, or a couple or spouse, you know, that are going to live in those, if they can qualify as two-person.
Can I follow up on that?
Sure.
In addition to, um, age-restricted, I know that in other towns, there are senior housing developments where it's mostly seniors, but there are younger people who may be disabled or something like that, and I'm wondering how that gets swept up into something of the problem of this.
Yeah, it's federal law. Unfortunately, that's federal, federal housing law, and it's a civil rights issue, and, you know, I, I go through this on a normal basis with our management company, with boards and whatnot, and I'd say the issue is with the management, because that federal law says that the federal government makes no distinction between those who are elderly and those who are... Now, there's ways in which management companies make sure that age-restricted means they're Sorry, I should have stayed up there.
Anybody else?
Excuse me, I'm Marie Brown, 42 Allen Street, and I'm the vice chairman of Abington Council on Aging. of Abington Council on Aging, um, and I also question why it is called Abington Senior Housing, um, we have been, the Abington Senior, we have been fighting, um, and meeting with for our affordable housing, we've been meeting with our, um, our representatives from Congress here in the Senate, um, to get more money, um, for affordable housing, but as you know, it's a real challenge, um, I would say that most of the seniors that are attending the, the senior center now that we're talking about, um, would never be able to afford these apartments, um, they are mostly on social security, limited, um, pension, are small pensions, and that's why there's a huge, as they call it, waiting list for affordable housing, um, and that's for state affordable housing, um, and the reason for that is that these, we have a lot of seniors who do these senior housing, but they, they can't afford, you know, what would be called luxury senior housing, which we all would love to get into, but unfortunately, and I think it's a great idea to have, have it, um, I just wish that, um, you would have more units that were gonna be for seniors, and more units that were so-called affordable for seniors, um, I understand that's a big part of your application process, um, that you need that, um, like I said, I, we're all for senior housing, we're all for housing in Abington, um, but, um, I don't, I don't really see this as affordable housing for Abington seniors, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Jack Bailey, six twenty-five Washington Street, I did talk to the police chief about the traffic on Washington Street, and after I talked to him, they posted Washington Street at thirty miles an hour, does that help? No, talked to the truck drivers, talked to the people in town, taking kids to school in the morning, I can't get out of my driveway, just walk to Orange Street, talk about traffic on Orange Street in the morning, that's from eighteen to the center of town, it's a throughway right to the train station, yellow lights, green lights, red lights, they don't make any difference, they're cutting through whichever way you want to traffic, oh, and they talked about access to get out of a property like that, think about the seniors that live on Shaw Avenue, and coming out to Route eighteen, one of the fastest streets in town, and I think a lot of this to do with speed, would be talking to the police chief to see what could possibly be done, and you're talking about Route fifty-eight, which is a country road, and it's only gonna get worse as they start bringing traffic out of Boston on two lanes on Route eighteen, they're gonna come down fifty-eight to go to Hanson, Whitman, doesn't make any difference, it's everywhere, so, I come out of my driveway, and I head north, and I'm going thirty, and I got, somebody followed me from the corner of the street from one twenty-three, they caught up to me, and two weeks ago, somebody passed me on Orange, on Washington Street, double yellow, and later that night, somebody passed me, again going about thirty, right at Shaw Avenue, to go up towards the old Damon Quonier, so, everybody's in a rush, so, I just watched traffic in the morning, and I used the tow, and I say, oh God, I can tell you that fifty-eight is a fast street, but it is not, Summer and Plymouth is not one of the, is in the top ten towing areas, because I towed for over fifty years for the town, it is in the top ten, but it is not number one, two, three, or four, okay, the police chief can tell you what the stats are, right?
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Can you handle hand, five thirty-eight Randall Street? I do agree that we have a problem with traffic in this town, but I don't think it should be related to this project, that problem exists before the project, and will exist after the project, my street is Route one thirty-nine, try that out sometime, it'd take you five hours to get out of this street, and the school is right in our area, so, I don't think that this project should be related to the traffic problem, I'm also a baby boomer, so that means I am definitely a senior citizen, but there is a great number of us, and I really feel that we need this project, we need to help our seniors, and we need to help our community, and I don't see a greater family to do that, that's my point.
Anybody else? We good? All right, back to the board.
So, um, what's the next step? We need to track, we need to look at all these waivers, right?
Right, yeah.
So, I would, um, I would recommend that we get some peer reviews, we get a traffic peer review, we get an engineering peer review, um, and then the board asks the applicant to sit down with the fire, with the fire chief or fire department, and, um, make some changes that he's comfortable with, um, but I do recommend that we hire a company to evaluate their traffic study, and hire a company to go through engineering with regard to stormwater, they're in a wet, very, very wet area, um, and, um, I would say most likely, we would have to hire two different peer reviewers, for, one for traffic and one for engineering, um, this is a peer review where the applicant will pay for the review, but the peer reviewer works for us, so, um, the applicant submit, they put money into a fifty-three G account with the treasurer, and, um, the bills get paid, the, the board submits the bills and gets paid, so there's, really, there's no interaction between the peer reviewer and the applicant, unless there's engineering questions and things like that, but.
And that takes approximately how long?
So, so we have a hundred and eighty days from tonight, um, there's, I would say, almost all of my forty Bs, they get, they get continued, because the applicant has questions they need to answer, um, but we have to, we have to think about the hundred and eighty days, so, um, we have to hire, we have to get proposals from a peer, from peer reviewers, and then we have to hire peer reviewers, so, um, I would put this out for six weeks, and then that would give us two weeks to hire somebody, and a month for them to come up with a report.
Okay, sounds reasonable.
And then in terms of the report, I mean, I think the majority of the comments tonight were from people in the neighborhood looking for remediation from certain conditions, or anything like that, is that something that could be encompassed within the peer review?
Yes, yes, yeah, that would, that would most likely be within the, that would be kind of a combination between the two, but, um, an engineering peer reviewer, if we, if we go with somebody like Tetra Tech or Beals and Thomas, um, they can, they can handle all of that.
And logistically, how does that work as far as getting somebody?
Uh, so, what we would do is, um, I could reach out to, again, Tetra Tech, Beals and Thomas, and then MDM for traffic, um, and we would, um, and we could reach out to VHB for traffic too, if we wanted to, um, they would each, they would get, we would send them packets, they would present us with proposals, when's your next meeting?
Our next regular meeting is October eleventh.
Okay, so we, that's actually, that's probably, that's probably fine, yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, that would, that's actually good, so that will give us time to get proposals in, and then you guys would just vote on the proposals, on the eleventh, and, um, then we would engage with the peer review consultants, and they would submit reports for a meeting that we would schedule at least, I would say, three or four weeks after the eleventh.
And so, as a point of order, on, um, October eleventh, it's not really a hearing, per se?
No, no, you wouldn't take any testimony on the, on the eleventh, you would have your normal meeting, it would be, it would be technically a business item that you would choose.
Like one of the old and new businesses, you would be on the back end of the meeting.
But, but you really, um, you really, um, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't take any new testimony, then all of these people don't have to come out.
That's why I'm asking specifically, because oftentimes, with hearings that get continued, they do not get informed a second or third time.
Correct, so, what you wanna do is, um, you, you will continue this hearing to a, to a time and date certain, um, which would be a meeting after the eleventh, and you're selecting, selecting.
And you're saying about six weeks out?
Yeah, so, um, maybe the first week of November, I think, right?
Where are you gonna be?
No, I'll be here.
No, I'm fine, I'm fine.
Can, can everyone make it?
November one?
We will, I know I will.
Okay.
Guys?
Can't imagine where else I'd rather be.
Is that acceptable to the applicant?
It's fine with me, so what was the date?
November first.
This is again a special meeting, right Nancy, this is not?
It's not our regular meeting, no.
So, we'll just be talking about this?
Yeah.
When is our next meeting, October what?
Ten eleven. So, with that November one meeting, you'd have the peer reviews.
Provisions, yeah, yeah.
No.
You have their, oh, and November first, you have the report, the peer reviewers would be here too, they will be here, and they will answer.
These folks might wanna come back on November?
Oh, yes, definitely, November first will be the next time this board takes testimony, um, so hopefully by November first, we would have the fire, the fire chief happy and comfortable, um, and then we would have a, we would have the engineering peer reviewer and the traffic peer reviewer, they would, most likely, they submit reports, um, to you, and then they will be here for questions.
So, for the people in the audience, this is your official notice that the next time we'll be discussing this is November first at seven PM, okay, unlike previous where you got something in the mail, that will not happen this time, so that's why we're letting you know.
I wanna thank you all for adding in your opinions and everything, it's important.
So, we need to make a motion to continue the meeting, correct?
Yes.
Do we need to make any sort of motion to allow you to engage with, like, peer reviewer or anything?
Um, I'm not going to be the one choosing the peer reviewer, you guys are, so you don't have to do that, we're not, we're not necessarily under the gun to do that, but we go our way.
And we'll talk more about this again, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Are you continuing the hearing, or are you closing the hearing and continuing the?
We're not closing the hearing.
Not closing the hearing, no.
You're continuing the hearing to November first.
Correct. So, I'd like to make a motion for the petition of Abington Investments LLC, two four five Central Streets, Abington, on the hearing of Abington Senior Housing at one oh one five Plymouth Street, be continued till November first at seven PM. I'll second.
Oh, favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Nothing else, I'll make a motion to adjourn. I will second that.
Oh, favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you.